Called to order. Board members, we have seven members present. And therefore, we have a quorum. And we want to thank, I mean, we want to welcome Cynthia Thompson, our new board member, to the board. We have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Moved. Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figus has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the November 5th, 2020 minutes?
I so move.
Second.
Ms. Halyard has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And just that quickly, we've gotten to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Cynthia Thompson is the newest member of the Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees. Mrs. Thompson, a member of Greater Bethlehem Temple Apostolic Faith Church of Jackson, is married to Elder Iman Thompson, Sr. They are the proud parents of seven children. Mississippi voted over a flag. The "In God We Trust" flag, a name given to it by the commission that selected it, replaces the old one, which prominently displayed the Confederate battle emblem. The old flag had flown over the state of Mississippi for 126 years. The new flag has a ring of 20 white stars that circle a white magnolia, the state's flower. The stars represent Mississippi's place as the 20th state to join the Union. An additional star at the top of the circle represents the state's Native American population.
I was talking with a student about the flag. And I came to discover that they didn't really understand that the former flag was the state's flag. And as a response to that, I felt that it was very necessary that our staff began teaching about the flag, so that the students will know that when the election came, this was what it was about. And I'm so elated that we have this opportunity to have a teachable moment for our students, so that they can understand that as a Mississippian, this is something that we can be proud of, because this new flag embraces our culture. It embraces heritage. It embraces the history of the state of Mississippi, and it eradicates divisions.
I guess I would say I liked to learn about the history, because I never knew that the Confederate flag represented our state. And when my teacher told me, and when the principal told me, I was shocked. Like, that state actually represents us. And I feel that the new state flag will be a push in the right direction.
We in Jackson Public Schools have actually had our scholars quite involved in this latest election of 2020, where we work to get young people registered to vote. We work to help them to understand the issues and the candidates and all of that, you know, from an educational standpoint.
Callaway basketball star DeShawn Ruffin has signed with Ole Miss. He made his selection on National Signing Day. Ruffin, along with Joseph Dupree of Murrah, were both named to the 2020 Clarion Ledger Basketball Dandy Dozen. Ruffin is a three-time Dandy Dozen Select and a nationally recognized guard. As a junior, Joseph Dupree was named to the 2020 Clarion Ledger All-State Boys Basketball Fourth Team. Dupree has committed to play at Jackson State University next year. Congratulations, Murrah High School. The Mississippi Scholastic Press Association selected Pleiades Literary Magazine for its Best of Mississippi Literary Magazine Award. The publication was produced by Murrah High School students. The magazine's staff and sponsor were also recognized in eight categories. Please visit our website to read more and to see the full list of honorees. You may have heard of the popular crowdfunding sites GoFundMe, Kickstarter, and Indiegogo, just to name a few. But there is another crowdfunder you should know about as well. It is called Donors Choose. Donors Choose is a crowdfunding nonprofit site launched by Jackson Public Schools. Crowdfunding is the practice of funding a project or venture by raising either large amounts of money or small amounts from a large number of people via the internet. JPS launched its crowdfunding initiative to make it easier for teachers to get additional classroom resources and to reach out to donors from across the country to request the exact materials that they need. For more information about Donors Choose, please visit the website shown here. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, visit us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
As always, we thank our instructional television production team for their work in developing the highlights reel. Just appreciate the time that they put into that and all of the wonderful things that are happening throughout our district. Our strategic plan, Excellence for All, articulates five big commitments that we've made to scholars and families and to the community. And those commitments guide our work. One of those commitments is to provide innovative teaching and learning. Ensuring that each JPS scholar has a dedicated device, technological device, has become an important part of that commitment. So we're excited to announce that 4,000 new Chromebooks have been delivered to Jackson Public Schools. These devices will support the goal of connecting teachers and scholars to ensure continuous learning, whether we're in the school building or learning virtually. While about 75% of our scholars are currently learning using a district device or one that they own personally, we still have about 3,500 to 4,000 scholars learning asynchronously. And that means that they're learning using the instructional packets or with support from their teachers via the telephone, or perhaps even utilizing some pre-recorded videos. Parents, if you're listening and your scholar does not have a device, please be on the lookout for a call or being contacted by your scholar's principal to schedule an appointment to pick up a device. Also, if you do not have internet access or connectivity at your home, please let the principal know, because we do have some available hotspots to get you connected. I want to stress that our commitment to providing innovative teaching and learning is going to change how we provide instruction. And becoming one-to-one or a district where we have at least one device per scholar will help us to eliminate the digital divide that exists in society, and will provide our scholars with a leveled playing field. And so we're excited about that. And I just got a notice today that our, I believe, 800 iPads for our youngest scholars have arrived. And so those will be, and that's for our primary learners. So those will be disseminated as quickly as possible. And that the remainder of the devices that we purchased, which is about 11,000 devices, will be delivered towards the end of this week. And so we're very excited to get all of those devices in finally. And we know that folks have been waiting patiently, and many of our scholars have just been doing the very best that they could, and our teachers, of course, and educators. But we're excited to get those devices in, and first and foremost, to get those who are not connected at all, to get them connected, and then to move towards the one-to-one with a device from the district for each and every one of our scholars. So excited about those developments. And we know that our team, our operations team, the IT team, the transportation team, our campus enforcement, the warehouse and property accounting, all of those teams are working really hard to ensure that those devices get tagged and inventoried and out quickly to schools and then on out to families. Every year, and periodically throughout the year, we take time to look at the various aspects of our work and the various pieces of data that we collect to ensure that our scholars are learning and that they are set up for great success. Even during this virtual learning environment, it's important for us to monitor the climate and to determine how it might impact scholars' achievement. At this time, board members, we'll have Amanda Thomas, our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness, to join us and to share an update on our climate and scholar behavior data. Ms. Thomas.
Great evening, President Johnson, Board Members, and Superintendent Green. It gives me great pleasure to provide to you an update on our Jackson Public Schools' Commitment Number Four: Joyful Learning Environments. Next slide. Of course, we always like to begin our presentations with our school mission, vision, and mission statements for Jackson Public Schools, as well as our core values. And those are listed here. As we progress to the next slide. Our objectives for the evening are to share an update on key initiatives as it relates to Commitment Number Four: Joyful Learning Environments, as well as to analyze and compare current data trends, that is, for this year of 2021, with the years of 2018, 2019, and the 2019-2020 school year. With Commitment Number Four: Joyful Learning Environment, there are five initiatives, five key initiatives that we focus on. Engaging families to support scholars' well-being and development. District Accountability Model for School Climate and Wellness. Fostering relationships between scholars and caring adults. Researching and implementing a district-wide framework to address social-emotional learning, that is SEL, as well as fostering learning experiences that are both fun and deeply engaging. And we believe that our scholars learn better when they are in environments that they view as safe, supportive, and positive. We'll take a closer look at each initiative as we go through the presentation. As we progress through the presentation, you will find visual graphics as we go through each initiative. The first one, Engaging Families to Support Scholars' Well-Being and Development. You will see flyers from Vision to Learn partnerships that we've had for the Parent Academy, as well as child nutrition grab-and-go meals. So as we go to the next slide. Vision to Learn provided free screening to Jackson Public Schools' students at various locations during the month of October, and these were for scholars ages 5 to 18. Our Partners in Education Department continues to host parent meetings for our families. External partners such as Parents for Public Schools, Marion Counseling Services, Choices for Children have all assisted with these presentations as well. Our Jackson Public Schools' Child Nutrition and Transportation serves and delivers breakfast and lunch to our scholars daily. And this is really being very convenient for our families. Our Child Nutrition provides grab-and-go weekend meals to scholars on Fridays as well. The next initiative is the District Accountability Model for School Climate and Wellness. Again, you'll see graphic that shows our Fall Learning Experience Survey. And so we will dig a little deeper into this particular initiative as well. Stakeholders are encouraged to complete surveys to let us know how we're doing. Next slide. We're soliciting feedback in the areas of facilities, faith, health, and well-being, childcare, and staff and student relationships. Some of these results from the Fall Learning Experience Survey were shared at a previous board meeting. We also administer a comprehensive needs assessment survey annually, and we utilize this data from the 1819 school year to use as a baseline. Again, we gauge our satisfactions for facilities, safety, and relationships between students and staff. We're also conducting cultural and climate walks to gauge relationships with students and staff as well, is how well they work together. We're also looking at the environment for instructional and structural readiness for students' return. We want to ensure that our schools and classrooms are designed in a way that are safe and that foster a sense of belonging for all of our students. Next slide. Our next initiative is fostering relationships between scholars and caring adults. Again, you'll see here visual graphics of student mediators from our Refresher Training for TAP, as well as our Virtual Parent Workshop Series that we're still conducting during this time. As we look a little closer at foster relationships between scholars and caring adults, again, our Community Partners Meeting began to share, are being held to share resources that will support our teachers and our families. We'll continue with those on Thursdays. We have our Virtual Parent Support Workshops as well. Our Accelerated Reader, or AR celebrations, as well as student recognitions. And just to name a few, Green Elementary School has recognized students through virtual and drive-through celebrations for their outstanding behavior, and this is with our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Initiative, as well as Accelerated Reader celebrations have been conducted at Galloway, Span, Casey, as well. The next set of slides shares more information about our Talk About the Problem, TAP initiative, that is currently in six schools. And those six schools are Wingfield, Witson, Callaway, Curtsey, Jim Hill, and Blackburn. And you may recall that these schools were selected by feeder patterns so that we can provide continuity of the program. Again, Talk About the Problem is a peer mediation program empowering students, strengthening schools, and helping students develop communication skills, leadership, as well as conflict resolution skills. And this initiative began back in 2009 in the district. Next slide. Although we're in a virtual learning setting right now, we have been continuing to progress with our TAP program. And you see here listed our TAP 2020 Virtual Plan. TAP has been progressing along with the virtual plan. We've held our regular monthly meetings with principals and site coordinators. We've had refresher trainings, and more plans are underway for additional mediations. The next slide shares TAP data for the 2019-2020 school year. We've had a number of mediate, our mediators per school. If you would go back, please. We have our schools listed, as well as the mediators per school, as well as the number of mediations per school. We had 75 mediations conducted by the mediators, which resulted in an agreement. And that means that it ended peacefully, and we're very proud of that. This year, we've had five virtual training sessions that lasted 45 minutes each. The next set of slides just gives some additional graphics about the work from our Talk About the Problem initiative. You will see students from Blackburn Middle School, Witten Middle School, as well as Curtsey Middle School, from their refresher trainings, as well as the mediator induction The next slide is from the virtual training that has been taking place. And these are refresher trainings with mediators from Jim Hill, Blackburn, Witten, and Curtsey, as they're being prepared for virtual mediation this school year. And during this time period, they did review the mediation checklist, as well as practice role plays. Next slide. The next initiative is researching and implementing a district-wide framework to address socially-emotional learning. And you see here on this graphic, we have lesson plans that have been provided by district counselors, school counselors, as well as a walkthrough tool, and a lesson being conducted by a counselor as well. As we dig deeper into this particular initiative, planning and the initial phase of socially-emotional learning implementation plan has begun with explicit socially-emotional learning instruction for students with a designated timeframe. If we could go to the next slide, please. We also have pilot curriculum being implemented at two of our elementary schools, and that is John Hopkins, as well as Dawson Elementary. Professional development sessions for staff and students on the five socially-emotional learning competencies, with an emphasis on self-awareness, knowing your own emotions, as well as controlling your emotions, which is self-management. And as always, we have a focus on our relationship skills. Jackson Public Schools offices continue to provide district and school-level professional development as well. And our last initiative for Joyful Learning Environment is fostering learning experiences that are fun and deeply engaging. And you see here that we have graphics from our Fall Festival, our College Spirit Day, Unity Day, in which we, anti-bullying, as well as Tech Tip Tuesdays. Next slide. Teachers utilize the instructional tools within our virtual platforms, such as Flipgrid, Padlet, Chat, as well as the annotation screen, to make certain that our virtual platforms are engaging for students. Again, we celebrated College Spirit Week through various activities to engage students, and many of these photos were shared on our district's social media outlets. Cardosa Middle School celebrated Red Ribbon Week daily activities for staff and students as well. Periodically, the district provides technology tips to assist students with virtual learning. And we're all aware that Lanier High School won first place in the social media challenge for our high school voter registration drive. During the next phase of the presentation, we will look at our data trends for this current school year in comparison to 2018-19, as well as 2019-20 school year. So our next slide is our total infraction comparison for those three years. If we go to the next slide, please. So for the year of 1819, which is in yellow, you see the elementary comparison for 1920 is in orange, and then for the current year of 2021, it is in blue. On the previous slide, it is, well, to note that at this point, we only have 11 total infractions for the district. Again, you see that for elementary, we have four, middle school, five, high school, two, and then 11 total infractions at this time for the district. And this is for the first quarter, which are the months of August, September, October, for those comparisons. The next slide is our top five infractions. So these are for any disciplinary action, which is office discipline referrals that may result in parent-teacher conferences, may result in student conferences, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, or in-school detention. Again, we only have 11 disciplinary infractions reported by schools this year. And so the totals for each one for this year are listed. So you see, for disrespect towards others, we've had four total infractions, or office disciplinary referrals, four for internet computer electronic use, and then one for the numbers three, four, and five. A huge decrease from the previous years. The next slide is total suspension comparison. So these are when we have suspension, again, that is either in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. So for elementary, we have three total for this year. Two resulted in OSS and one ISS. The middle school division had zero at this time, and high school division has one resulting in out-of-school suspension, for a total of only four suspensions at this time for the months of August, September, and October. And this is definitely attributed to our Talk About the Problem, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Tools for Life, as well as general competencies and our focuses on socially-emotional learning this year. The next slide deals with our discipline cases or our alternative placements that we particularly, this is our long-term placements for students. Again, on the next slide, you will note comparisons for the 2018-19 school year, as well as for this current school year of 2021. For elementary, we have zero alternative placements, as well as for high school, Capital City, as well. The middle school, we do have three alternative placements, one for the month of August and two for the month of, I'm sorry, zero for the month of August, one for the month of September, and two for the month of October, for a total of three. And currently, our district total is three. Again, in middle school, had zeros, out-of-school suspensions. However, they do have three alternative placements at this time. Next slide. We're on track to meeting our strategic goal of 10% or fewer students suspended by the year of 2024. In the spring of 2018-19, there were 13% of our scholars suspended. In the spring of 1920, we ended the school year with 11.5% of JPS scholars suspended. And for this timeframe of last year, for the first quarter, we were at 8.4% of Jackson Public Schools' scholars suspended. And currently, we are at less than 1% of our students suspended. And our goal for the year is 11% or fewer of students suspended. So we are on track to reaching our goal. Next slide. As we look at our key takeaways for this afternoon, overall, our number of disciplinary infractions are down from last school year. This is both considering our enrollment decline, as well as the pandemic. The district's commitment to providing joyful learning environments, implementing socially-emotional learning, promoting positive relationships with scholars and adults, is continuing to produce positive results. And we know that as we prepare for transitioning to a more traditional learning model, we will continue to utilize and emphasize our positive behavior intervention supports for the first two weeks of returning to school, as well as reviewing our district-wide, school-wide classroom expectations, and continuing to focus on our socially-emotional learning. Also, we are on track to meet this year's strategic plan goal to reduce the percentage of student suspensions to 11% or fewer by the end of the year. Are there any questions? Thank you all.
It's okay. Just a couple of, can you hear me? Okay. Just a couple of additional comments. Obviously, we know that the pandemic and the fact that we're in a virtual mode has had a major impact on some of these numbers. We're also very mindful, though, that just as some scholars have made some poor decisions and received discipline on the heels of those, that many other scholars could have as well. You know, all sorts of things. We actually were, I know at least a few of us were fearful or mindful of an increase in cyber bullying and that sort of thing. And we really, as far as we've seen in our numbers and the data, we haven't seen a huge uptick in that. And some of that's just the functionality of the technology that we have where there isn't as much opportunity for scholars to mistreat one another online, but it exists. And so, again, we just want to name that we are aware that that has had an impact on these numbers, a drastic impact on these numbers, but we're also naming that we're seeing the decline. And that even now, in this virtual setting, that our team is continuing to implement some of the really smart strategic moves to prepare young people and adults to get along and to appreciate and respect one another and to make positive choices that will create the kind of climate that sets us all up for greater success. So just wanted to name that. Any questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment. And I appreciate Dr. Thomas's work and the team's work, and your comments were appreciated too, Dr. Green. I had just a quick question about parent engagement and recognizing, of course, I'm assuming that many of our parent activities were virtual, or I might have missed that. But how are we in engaging our parents and families and caregivers more? Because that really was one of the big concerns that I know this board had when we were first seated. And I know there is work being done, and however, it has been impacted by the pandemic.
Sure.
Do we see an increase or some kind of increased activity that shows our parents? That we, how we are serving our parents is helpful to them.
Rather than try to answer off the top of my head, why don't we come back with some actual numbers? I've got some, you know, I've got top of mind several programs and meetings and trainings and engagements with parents kind of district-wide, as well as by division and by school. But I'd rather us come back with some actual numbers and some more concrete response to that.
That's excellent. That's fine. And I do want to say, I happened to be on a community call that Dr. Thomas was presenting, and she did an excellent job in connecting all the dots and helping our community partners. In addition to the, those that she brings, what our needs are. So I was very impressed with popping in on her. She didn't know I was going to be in that meeting.
Always, what is it, stay ready and you don't have to get ready.
Don't have to get ready, right.
So let me say this, you keep calling her Dr. Thomas, and we're gonna make that still at some point, yes.
For sure.
She's on that journey.
Okay, good. The more the merrier. Good luck.
Yes, ma'am. I was going to say one other, oh, and just because Ms. Thomas just presented, she is our COVID czar. So she is the, obviously, leading our climate and wellness team. She is the team member who is doing the major lifting of coordinating and quarterbacking, along with our lead nurse, and of course, with our school leaders and other leaders across the district. So just want to name that, in addition to all of this work and focus on climate and wellness, this piece, this specific piece on COVID, Ms. Thomas is leading that piece. So just wanted to name that for everyone. Okay, board members. Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations, Ms. Thomas, for such an excellent report. I was wondering if you could shed a little light on the infractions for suspension. You know, I was thinking in terms of the fact that, you know, it's virtual. And so what about the infractions, if that is information that can be shared?
Yes, it can be. I know, I believe there were two of the infractions that involved individuals from one school getting the credentials of scholar from another school and entering a classroom and displaying some very inappropriate and offensive and threatening. So that's at least two of the incidents that you can share, Ms. Thomas.
Pretty basically, and those are the ones, and when you see the disrespect towards others or the internet computer electronic misuse, those are the type of behaviors. And that's why we have those two categories actually equalling up to eight for those. Because as Dr. Green stated, getting on particular virtual platforms, whether it's Google Meet or Zoom, or whether it's the Blip Boop button and then causing disruptions. So that's basically how they were coded. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So again, I mean, we get that there's a small number, but even that begs the question, what are folks doing that would create caused suspensions?
Well, I don't have a question that needs to be answered, but I would just wonder if we're thinking ahead. How do these numbers inform our decisions in the future? And how, obviously, they're going to go up when we have people in person and you have human beings interacting with each other. But maybe there are lessons to be learned about the decisions we make in terms of disciplining students. And I just, this is not a question, I just hope that we are thinking about how that informs our in-person learning when we are back in schools.
Yes, sir.
Because the numbers are amazing, but we all know they're because of the pandemic. But hopefully, that can inform some of the responses and decisions we make in the future.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'll just say this, you know, we've begun signaling to scholars, to families, to the community that the moving to the one-to-one status opens up lots of opportunities for us as we think about the interruptions to instruction. I mean, we've typically talked about it vis-à-vis the inclement weather and some of those other kinds of interruptions. But I would imagine that as we continue to think through how best to address infractions, that those would be, the technology would be folded into that in some ways. So I definitely appreciate that.
Keeping kids engaged is definitely better than just sending them home.
Yes, ma'am.
You're muted, Ms. Johnson.
Right, the question from Ms. Johnson was, how close will we be to our goal of one-to-one when we get the computers in? So we're almost there with the 4,000. We're about another, we're probably another thousand or so gap of having, I'm sorry, no, that's not true. Some number of, some fair number of scholars are using devices from home, right? So with the 4,000 that we just received, or that we received a week or so ago, that gets us pretty close to everyone being connected. With the 11,000 that we'll receive, we'll have a buffer of devices to replace those that are personally owned, because we want folks to have a district-issued device, even if they have another one at home, that they can use for our district assignments. And so we will have enough to be one-to-one, plus devices that can be used to swap out if someone breaks them or something happens. So we'll be there. So by the end of this week, we'll be there. Actually, it's just occurring to me. By the end of this week, we'll be there in terms of devices. And then just the process of getting them in the hands of scholars and all of the related pieces. It is huge, and it's a game changer for us, and, you know, indeed. Okay, yes, sir. If you ask, I'll repeat it. The question from Dr. Sevak was, there were some slides in the presentation about social and emotional learning. And so the question was, have we seen an increase in requests of support for our scholars around mental health needs? And relatedly, perhaps from our human resources team, have we seen an increase in folks reaching, in our team members reaching out for support from the Employee Assistance Program? Can definitely bring data on just numbers, obviously, from the staff requests. And Ms. Thomas, do you have a sense of yes or no, an uptick of requests around mental health?
Yes, an uptick, definitely, yes. And we've been able to fulfill those requests, as stated through our employee assistance program with a merit and counseling. So we've had an uptick for staff requests as well as student and family requests.
And, you know, not so surprisingly, but thankfully, we've got those resources and partnerships in place to start to address them. Again, I'll just stress, we try to do a bit of work, though, both with our scholars and with team members around mindfulness, being intentional about how you feel, how stress shows up, and monitoring your feelings so that you can speak about them or name when you're just not in a good place, and you can get the help you need, or at least that folks can give you the space you need just to kind of deal and not have conflict because you're in a time of stress. But we can absolutely, I'll ask Ms. Thomas if you'll get some specific numbers just on if we can do any comparison from last year to perhaps this year of requests for support. And the other request was, any additional information on how we're communicating and ways that we can communicate about those supports to make sure that parents and certainly that staff as well know what's there and so that folks aren't needing help and not tapping into it. Okay. Right, we've got actually a few more bits of information that we want to share with you, board members. Get back to my list here. Jackson Public Schools, I'm very excited to share this. Jackson Public Schools just continues our partnership with Insight Education Group. You might recall, they assisted with helping to identify some findings early on and doing a scan over the entire district and supporting us and building out our strategic plan and all of that. And especially the partnership with them focuses on instructional effectiveness. A few months ago, we joined Insight and joined application to the U.S. Department of Education for a teacher and school leader incentive program, or TSL, TSL grant. Our proposal to the Department of Education brings together a group of geographically diverse school districts focused on educator effectiveness. And this grant would help implement and expand a robust human capital management system in high-need schools to impact student achievement. Also, educators from JPS would be provided the opportunity to collaborate with educators from other districts and there in other states on ways to impact student achievement. The grant would also provide opportunities to recruit effective educators to our district and provide professional development and career ladder opportunities for educators. Well, I'm very pleased to announce that our grant application was approved by the U.S. Department of Education. And at this time, Dr. Kimberly Smith, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will join us to share a bit more about this wonderful new opportunity. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Green. Great evening. To board President Johnson, school board members, Dr. Green, our leadership team, and our community, it gives me a great honor to provide a brief overview of our teacher and school leader grant that we finally called the TSL Grant. Next slide. As we continue to bring our strategic plan to life, we develop, everything that we do is grounded in our mission and vision as we prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and to be fulfilled individually. Our mission is to develop scholars to world-class learning experiences, to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and the necessary dispositions for great success. Next slide. Our core values of equity, excellence, growth mindset, relationships, relevance, and positive and respectful cultures ground the work that we do every day. Next slide. So as Dr. Green has stated, the purpose of this presentation is to articulate the purpose of our TSL Grant, the implications of our TSL Grant, the funding and logistics of the grant. So again, Insight Education Group in partnership with Jackson Public Schools has Project Ignite. Ignite is an acronym that stands for Innovation Generation by Network Improvement Teams of Educators. And this directly focuses with commitment to innovative teaching and learning and commitment number three of talented and empowered teams. As Dr. Green stated, our partnership will enable us to collaborate with other school districts across the nation. In Texas, the Greenville Independent School District. Of course, with us in Mississippi, Jackson Public Schools. In Florida, the School District of Palm County, and in New York, Syracuse City School District. Next slide. The focus of this grant also will help us to focus on critical levels that impact student achievement. We will focus on improving student achievement, improve teacher and leader efficacy, and create sustainable systems. There are three levers of impact, instructional leadership, professional coaching, and professional learning opportunities that will be the primary focus of the work with this grant. Next slide. So succinctly put, we have a project overview. So the support for our district deals with strategic planning, number one. The strategic planning framework is developed by Insight, and it would enable high-quality, innovative educational options that are fundamental to long-term success and would help our JPS strategic plan to become a living document by creating initiatives and action steps that are aligned to the mission, vision, as well as our priorities and measurable goals. Another support for the district are leadership academies. So this grant also enables us to have leadership academies for aspiring administrators, opportunities to build a teacher-leader ladder, to become lead teachers within the schools and demonstration teachers. These teachers would help to increase effectiveness district-wide with instructional practices. And lastly, our equity-focused recruitment efforts would also be impacted by this grant. Opportunities to network through quarterly meetings established by advisory council that will consist of the partnering networks with the Insight Team, the Evaluation Team, participation in our National Educators Workshop, and the Education Exchange, which is a collaboration of urban school districts and minority institutions of higher learning, mostly HBCUs. Next slide. So this grant was written to incorporate the following nine schools. These schools were identified in the United States Department of Ed Qualified Opportunity Zone. We have Barack Obama Magnet School, Bates Elementary School, Galloway Elementary School, Pecan Park Elementary School, Van Winkle Elementary School, Blackburn Middle School, Brinkley Middle School, Cardoza Middle School, and Provine High School. Next slide. So just as we have supports for the district, there will also be some So just as we have supports for the district, there will also be supports for our schools. The first support instructional leadership teams. We began some work on last year with Insight with our ILTs, uh, our instructional leadership teams. And we will continue to ground their work in our traction research for, um, school improvement. Also professional learning communities. Insight has also developed a framework for, uh, professional learning communities that support teacher effectiveness that's grounded in the PLC framework to seek, discover, confirm and share. Seek solutions, discover viable options, confirm solutions through trying the solution, measure the results and deciding on the best solution based on results, then share what works. Also, there will be ongoing coaching and support for those teachers and leaders. Key positions that will be, um, utilized with this grant. It will enable us to have lead teachers that will help to conduct the PLCs and professional learning within the schools. Demonstration teachers to demonstrate best practices and instructional routines in the schools. And also it would help us with funding and providing stipends available for identify, identified positions and responsibilities within the grant. Next slide. So as you can see, our funding is a $3.1 million grant over a three-year period. These funds will enable us to provide salaries and stipends for those, uh, individuals identified within the grant. Uh, leadership academies help with recruitment and retention support, resource development, advanced, uh, platform and travel and conferences and fees. Next slide. So we have an implementation timeline. So first, the district, uh, designates a primary point of contact, which I will be serving in that position along with, uh, Ms. Kate England with Insight, we will, um, work together. And so our internal communication, develop an internal communication strategy. So we started tonight with our board to make sure that everyone understands where we are. And then we will move to internal support such as meeting with our assistant superintendents as well as those principals of those nine, nine schools to ensure that they understand what's to come. Then we will continue to work to develop district budget revisions and then the district implementation plan. And that will be in collaboration with our Insight Group partner. Together at each time, at each pivotal moment in the timeline, the board will be given a brief update as to where we are in the implementation timeline. Next slide. So again, like I stated, we are at this step. And then we work through January and February to develop those district budget revisions and implementation plan. Next slide. Are there any questions and/or comments?
Congratulations, great work.
It really was, yeah, really was a good presentation. Thank you for your work, very, uh, enlightening and informative and uplifting.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, thank you, um, uh, Dr. Smith. Board members, we're excited about this opportunity. Obviously, it's gonna add additional, uh, work, but it's also going to be, uh, create some opportunities for teachers to do what they're already doing, um, getting smarter about the work and sharing their strategies and serving as, um, identified coaches and supports to other teachers. It's just, there's so many upsides to this, we're, we're excited to be moving forward with this partnership. Okay, that's the good news. Board members, as you know, we, uh, we use benchmark assessments to set standards for best practices and teaching and learning and to improve performance among specific, uh, scholars. And in other words, we analyze performance data to identify skill gaps and deficits, to improve teacher effectiveness, to improve our curricular, uh, materials and, and selections, instructional delivery and to find the root causes, um, uh, of any challenges in, in, in the instructional, uh, process. At this time, I'll invite, uh, Dr. Smith back, um, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning along with Pamela Franklin, who's, uh, one of our assistant superintendents for elementary schools and for, uh, and, and Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas, who's the Assistant Superintendent for High Schools to join and share, uh, a bit of, bit more information about our Benchmark One data. So excited to share this information with you, colleagues.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay? All right, good evening, President Johnson, board members, Dr. Green, uh, and community guests. Um, on behalf of the Instructional Assistant Superintendents and the Executive, uh, Director of the Office of, uh, Teaching and Learning, um, we welcome this opportunity to share the results of the first Benchmark Administration with you for your, um, review. As both, uh, Ms. Thomas and Dr. Smith, um, already said, it's important to, um, always start with our why, revisiting our why. So, uh, hopefully, uh, you don't mind me going through this one more time. Our, our vision and our mission statements here in JPS. Our vision is to prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally and to be fulfilled individually. And then our mission statement is to develop scholars through world-class leading experiences to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets and the necessary dispositions for great success. And of course, our core values are more than just, um, words, um, on a slide. Everything that we do in terms of informing our decisions and those decisions are grounded in, uh, these six, uh, core values. Equity, excellence, growth mindset, relationships, relevance, and of course, positive and respectful cultures. Um, this evening, this presentation has three core objectives. The first being to review and discuss the Benchmark One assessment data. The second piece will be to discuss probable strengths as well as opportunities for growth. And the third and final piece is to discuss our instructional next steps. Um, as a review, these are the, um, different, um, benchmarks that we'll give throughout the academic year. We did have the pre-assessment, uh, back in September, September 14 through the 28th. And our scholars took that assessment both online as well as paper and pencil. Um, we just again completed the Benchmark One Administration. That window was open from October 13th through October 27th. We still did administer that into, uh, platforms online as well as paper and pencil. But the number of students taking it paper and pencil was greatly, um, reduced. We had a lot of schools that worked with their scholars to allow them to come into the building in a safe, you know, environment in a lab, um, to, um, take the assessment, um, online. Uh, Benchmark Two will be coming up, uh, right before the, um, the winter break, uh, December 14 through the 18th. And then we'll round it out in the spring with the third and final Benchmark, um, March 8th through the 12th. And of course, the next two, um, administrations, as Dr. Uh, Green signaled, um, earlier, we're anticipating that a hundred percent of that will be online as we're approaching, uh, that one-to-one, um, goal. The district assessment, uh, population, the, the who of our assessment, um, all of our third through eighth grade scholars do participate in the benchmarks. Um, and they are assessed in, uh, both English Language Arts as well as Mathematics. Um, our fifth and eighth grade, um, students additionally take a science assessment. And then the high school, um, map test, which are subject area tests, um, are in Algebra One, English Two, U.S. History and Biology One. So we'll begin with taking a look at some summary, uh, data by division. And so we'll start off with, uh, elementary. What you see here on this slide are the participation rates by grade and, um, subject area. In the far right-hand column, you'll see the minimum participation rate, um, that's required by, um, the Mississippi State Department of Education. Uh, just as a reminder, um, when we take the state assessment, um, in the spring each year, if we don't have 95% or more of our students participating, um, each, that school or the, the district will automatically drop one letter grade. So this is a important metric for us to track every time we do the benchmark because we always want to hit 95 or greater. Um, you will notice here for elementary, the average is right around 90%. Normally this is always at 95 or higher, but as you know, we are in a pandemic, um, and some of the scholars and their, uh, families, um, uh, felt, felt hesitant about coming into the building if they did not have a device, uh, to assess. And some of those that had the paper and pencil, um, you know, we may have had some trouble getting those, um, paper documents, uh, back. So that explains the slight decline that you see there in the participation rates for elementary. So this slide, um, allows us to compare Benchmark One performance, um, last year compared to Benchmark, uh, performance this year. So you see the 2019, 2020 column right next to the 2020, 21 column. Um, this is just looking at, uh, proficiency. There are other components to the accountability model, but, um, as in terms of proficiency, these are our students that are projected to be level four, um, and level five. Um, so as you look down, um, this column here, the 2021 column, you'll notice some percentages that are in red and green. Um, there's two ways you can look at the data on this slide. You can look, um, for example, for fourth graph last year compared to fourth grade math this year, which those are two different groups of students. Um, or you can look at this by comparing cohorts. So for example, third grade students last year, on average, um, 21% of them were projected to be fours and fives. And those students that were promoted to fourth grade, you know, that's what this arrow is showing here, they're at 22% now. So there is some growth there. So the green indicates growth by cohort, uh, for the elementary group. Um, the red does indicate a slight, um, uh, regression there for the cohort that moved, advanced from fourth grade to fifth grade. In the last two columns to the right, what you'll see are, um, our district goals that have been, um, identified and called out in our district's strategic plan. Um, so we do have some five-year goals by the year 2024. We do want, um, all of our third grade scholars, both in ELA as well as math, uh, to be, uh, 50% or more of them to be proficient. Uh, and then on average for all math students, third through eighth grade as well as Algebra One, by 2024, we want to have at least 40% or more, um, proficient and the same percentage, 40% or more proficient for all, um, ELA. So again, you get to kind of see where we are here compared to our year five goal as whereas we have separate, um, year-by-year goals. And so for year two, this is what our goal is that will keep us on track to that five-year goal. All right, next, we're gonna look at our summary data for, um, middle school. Um, again, in middle school, the sixth through eighth grade students, um, assess an ELA and math. And then additionally, eighth grade does take the science, um, assessment. And, um, we do have some students, about 200 this year, that, um, are taking compacted eighth grade math, which also includes the eighth grade standards as well as Algebra, uh, One. Um, so again, here in this column, we see our projected proficiency levels of four and fives, uh, from the Benchmark Administration. Uh, the next column here, we do see our participation rate, uh, for, uh, middle school. Again, that, that bar is 95% that we always want to hit or greater. And then in the far two right columns again are our year two, um, goals as well as the five-year goals that I referenced, um, earlier. Again, stick, sticking with middle school here, we have, um, a comparison of Benchmark One, uh, to Benchmark Two, which we put a loop there to just, uh, draw your eye to these numbers. Once again, um, we see the red and the green that signals either, um, an increase or, um, a decline. These numbers on the middle school slide are, uh, coded here for, um, a grade level to grade level comparison, which again, um, are different groups of students. But if we want to compare cohort to cohort, for example, um, sixth grade math last year, 22% were projected to be proficient and seventh grade math this year was 23. So when we look at it that way, that same group actually made, um, um, an increase there. Okay, high school, last but certainly not least, we did have the four subject area assessments, Algebra One, Biology One, English Two and, uh, U.S. History. The participation rates again in the far right-hand corner there range from a low of 61% um, to a high of 67%. Um, so again, some of the same reasons that we, um, you know, signaled before, why those are lower just are a little more pronounced, um, at the high school level. Um, again, in the middle column, we do see our projected proficiencies there, um, by subject area. 9% for Algebra One, 22 for Biology, 21 for English Two and 24% uh, for U.S. History. Again, we want to look at the benchmark, um, to benchmark comparison from last year, uh, to this year. It's a little bit difficult to look at cohorts at this level because they're not tracking in the same way, of course, that they would, um, in elementary um, or middle school. But Algebra One students last year compared to Algebra One students this year, you can see the difference there in our projected proficiencies. Um, Biology has, um, maintained and stayed the same. English Two, um, is, is slightly up there by 2%. And it's worth noting that for English Two, that is the one, um, benchmark assessment that, um, is comprehensive when we give it the first time. All of the others are paced for the standards that are aligned to that nine weeks. But for English Two, for them to be testing on all of the standards for the whole year and still hold their own in a pandemic with last year and show growth, I think is something to, um, uh, you know, call out there. And again, on the right-hand side here, we do see our year two, um, uh, goals per our, uh, district strategic plan as well as our five-year goals. So next, I'm gonna, uh, yield the floor to, um, Ms. Marshall-Thomas and she's going to discuss, um, our areas of strength as well as our opportunities for growth.
Great evening, everyone, I'll just jump right in. Um, I will discuss some identified areas of strengths and opportunities for growth. What you'll see in the next few slides will include priority standards, some that are consistent in all three divisions that our students did fairly well in, and we're considering those strengths and some priorities standards that our students need some additional support in, and we're calling those opportunities for growth. And for clarity, um, priority standards are a carefully selected subset of grade-specific and course-specific standards within each content area that students must know and be, be able to do by the end of the school year. First, I'll start off with English, um, with grades three through eight and English Two. Note that the terms bolded indicate behaviors or actions that are required by the student to demonstrate mastery. So for example, one strength is our students have to be able to acquire and use accurate grade-level vocabulary. One area of growth is determining the main idea. And I won't, as we go through the slides, I won't read all of them, but I will highlight some, um, some particular standards. So if you notice at the end, it talks about analyzing a particular point of view. And you notice in parentheses, it says literature. The, then to the right, it says comparing and contrasting points of view. What you'll note is in ELA, our students performed fairly well with literature or literary text. But where we have opportunities for growth is with informational text. So just to contrast, literary text or fiction are stories, uh, about people, animals or events that are made up by an author. Whereas informational text or nonfiction are texts that may include biographies, autobiography, books about history, social studies, science, technical texts and other literary nonfiction text. So what you'll hear later on in the presentation is our shift to providing our students instruction that includes more informational text. Whereas on the Mississippi map assessments, our students have a 30% literature to 70% informational text ratio. So on our tests, our students will see more informational text than they will literature. Next slide. This slide, um, includes science standards in fifth, eighth grades and biology one. And, um, as again, note the, the, um, the bolded terms, develop and use scale models, um, using engineering design process. And, and to note, this particular standard where it says use an engineering design process is part of, this is a new standard for, for our students and our teachers. This is part of the next generation science standards. And for our students to actually do better or, or they are faring pretty well with this particular standard, um, deserves highlighting. Next slide. U.S. History. Um, and this, of course, is high school only. Noting that, um, in interpreting, um, it talks about the industrial age as, as a strength and also, um, the progressive movement. Both, both, um, say trace the development of political, social and cultural movements and subsequent reforms. This is specific- This is specifically talking about the progressive movement. But then also on the other side, it talks about tracing national legislation resulting from and affecting the progressive movement. Now, the progressive movement across the years for us in U S history has been an area of growth. So for us, this has been a targeted area that we worked that we worked on over the past few years. And to see this particular one as a strength, but also we have some additional growth opportunities. And then mathematics. The next two slides you'll see will include third through eighth grade math and also algebra one. And noting again, the bolded words. On the left-hand side, it says fully divide multi-digit numbers, apply properties of operations. But then on the right side, it's requiring and asking our students to do more rigorous tasks, solve real-world mathematical problems. Now, compute is not a very rigorous task, but this particular standard is asking our students to do something a little different. And we're going to talk a little bit about this particular standard as we look at at an assessment item. But it deals specifically with ratios and proportional relations. Next slide. And then for algebra one, of course, we have middle school and high school algebra one. The one in particular that we will talk about will be being able to represent and interpret, not just being able to calculate or solve algorithms, but how do you represent it and what does it mean as an answer? Next slide. We're going to look at three sample items, and the sample items will include third grade math, seventh grade math, and of course, algebra one. This was one of our third grade math questions, and it asks our third graders, which situation represents the expression eight times four? And I have, we have the responses below, and you'll note that the correct answer was D. Only fifteen percent of our students actually got this particular question correct. I'm sorry, forty percent of our students missed it. Fifteen percent of our students actually got it correct. And so as we go through this discussion, you'll note that there are some some processes that we actually go through as as school teams or P O Cs to kind of identify what do we think the misconceptions are or the skill gaps are? Next slide. This one, this is a seventh grade question. Again, this is the ratio of proportional relations question that we talked about. Again, it just simply asks our students to compute unit rates, very simple as it appear, right? But the difference here is they're not asking our students to just simply compute. They are providing it as a word problem or real-world application problem. And our students have to take that information and then use it or apply it. So if you'll notice, the correct answer was D, twenty-seven point three percent of our students got it correct. Whereas twenty-seven point nine percent of our students chose the same wrong answer, which is B. One thing that we know in a in a particular question like this and the responses like this, the answers are almost equal. So it looks like about a fourth of of the student population in seventh grade, they just all chose, you know, a fourth chose A, a fourth chose B, C, and D. What that generally tells us is that our students guessed on this particular question. Next question. And then finally, this is the algebra one assessment. And again, word problem, and it asks our our students to represent the constraints of an equation. So, for example, the constraints are three hundred and sixty cookies, five times as many. And what they also have to do is interpret the solutions as a viable option. So not just being able to calculate it, but what does it mean? And how do you interpret this solution or what does this solution mean? So for this one, the correct answer was D, only seventeen point five percent of our students got it correct. Whereas forty-five point five percent of our students chose the same wrong answer, which is C. Which tells us that, you know, over sixty percent, sixty-five percent of our students actually selected C and D. So they knew that one of the constraints was, okay, the peanut butter cookies and the white cookies, white chocolate cookies total must be three sixty. They didn't they didn't subtract, so they didn't choose that answer choice. But where they kind of got fuzzy was, what does five times as many white cookies as peanut butter cookies look like? Next slide. And so as we go through our fit process, we 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 try just to find what are the performance errors or misconceptions that our students are have. And so what we do is we go through these series of of questions here. What did we observe in this particular question? So as we're talking to our students, whether they're saying that the reason they missed this question, what are some things that we anticipate are the reasons that they missed the questions? What are some possible solutions? What are the instructional strategies to address those solutions? What does the learning environment look like? Are we going to do this in small groups, large groups? Are we going to do these in centers? What is the, how much time we spend on it, with the frequency or duration, we're going to do this and do nows? Are we going to do many lessons? Are we going to do it for a two-week period of time? These are the types of questions that we address as part of our focus instructional team meetings or P O Cs when we look at data. Next. And so as we went through the particular algebra item, these are some of the misconceptions that we kind of, that as part of the observation, this is what we observed, that our students may struggle to interpret the verbal representation of five times as many white chocolate cookies. We also said that students may not have read and understood the entire word problem. They may not have been exposed to these type of problems in class. They may struggle with creating equations from the word problems. And then finally, the students may have failed to justify their answer by using the numbers to determine if the number is a viable option, which specifically talks back to the standard. And remember, we talked about priority standards stating that students must understand a a certain subset of skills in order to master a particular skill. So for these type of problems, our students will see this standard embedded in many other standards throughout algebra, algebra two, geometry, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Good evening again. So as a result of this dataset and trends that we've noted in other assessments, we have some actionable next steps that will be described in this section of our presentation. So again, Ms. Marshall Thomas thoroughly went through and explained our fit meetings, our focus instructional fit team meetings that are our data P O C meetings. Not only do we look at those skill gaps and deficits, we also look at those strengths and the ways that we build upon those strengths. Improving teacher effectiveness by analyzing those questions that determine the amount of exposure and how students will continue to see those questions throughout instruction delivery. We also, during this time, look at how we improve curriculum development and instruction delivery, and again, finding the root causes of problems and misconceptions. Why do students respond in the manner in which they did? Other skills, other datasets that we utilize also is utilizing our star reports. So with our star reports that are created from with the Renaissance platform, that's our diagnostic data that will reveal to us more areas of opportunities for growth as well as strengths that our students are exhibiting, and also diving deeper into where those interventions could also be found. And then our statistical reports, our statistical T E twenty-one reports not only gives us a a look at how the school is doing or how the district is doing, but we receive individual score reports for each student that took on those tests. And teachers are and principals are able to look at those tests as well as from the district level, we're able to look at those test results to see exactly where the supports are needed. And again, to use that to determine strengths and weaknesses and play a small group instructional or individual activities. One of the key pushes this year, in order to make sure this is not a new document, however, it's been more helpful this year than ever before, is our scaffolding document that was created by Mississippi Department of Ed a few years ago, but it enables us to really look at where students are to provide support and build those statements on where students are. So we're looking at, if we want to accelerate, we're looking at on-grade level standards, and then what can we do to push them? And that will help our students to, that also incorporates our students that are gifted and are higher learning students. We can push them to a higher level and also looking back at where our students should be and dropping a grade level below to see some statements and other activities that we can include there. Also, we want to make sure in the example, before we move to the next slide, in the example that Ms. Marshall Thomas provided, as it related to looking at a third grade test item, looking at a seventh grade test item and an algebra one, that was a clear example of how we utilize the scaffolding document with vertical alignment. We utilize that document with vertical alignment so that we can see as a third grade student, this is where this child is. But a seventh grade, this is what they need to know by the time they get to seventh grade, and by the time they get to algebra one, so that that platform is strengthened and we can continue to build a strong foundation. Next slide. So as we continue to effectively utilize our multi-tiered level support process system, we utilize that to conduct our small group and eventually use that to identify those students that need individual support, monitor their their progress, and it may, and when we say consistently, it depends on the student. It could be done weekly, could be done biweekly or even monthly. And then we also course correct based on the student's outcome. So if a student is participating in an intervention and is working, then we'll move to another standard and intervene even more. Or if there's a situation where the student is not making progress on their particular standard with that course of action, then the course of action is changed. We also utilize our professional learning opportunities, and there has been a shift of the context of our professional development sessions. So we we provide those supports for effective best instructional practices. But we also made a shift this year to provide more inquiry-based instruction, where we are looking at more at students that are learning than teacher-provided learning. So over the, for example, with the the example that Ms. Marshall Thomas provided, we will have students to engage more, to ask them about performing, provoke in questions. Where is your thought process at that time? Instead of teachers front-loading at the beginning, getting an understanding of where students, their thinking is at that time throughout the learning process, and then provide the appropriate supports to to help to demystify misconceptions and clarify any misunderstandings. She also talked about shifts in our in our E L A. So making sure that we understand that reading and information, reading informational text and reading literature text from fourth through seventh grade, it's about fifty-fifty. But when students get to eighth grade, the shift from reading information decreases, well, it increases to fifty-five percent, and literature decreases to forty-five percent. And by English two, there again, as she stated, there is a thirty to seventy percent split between reading information text and well, as well as our literature text. So just to make sure that we provide those professional learning opportunities to those for those shifts and also to follow through with immediate coaching and feedback. And as we continue to build out our strategic plan, that additional layers of support for our third grade scholars, again, all of that I mentioned on the previous two slides, we make sure we have a laser focus on our third grade students. They have all have third grade success plans, that's a level of comprehensive support with data-driven strategies, targeted interventions, progress monitoring. And again, that looks different for each child or group of children based on their needs. And also to better help support them in those high-leverage standards, they have the teachers participate in professional learning sessions around those high-leverage standards, tracking students for support. Our teachers, our principals, our district leadership team have participated in the Mississippi Department of Education tracking system so that we will understand better how to really work with our students and track their progress. And then also with the distribution of devices, third grade was on the priority list to receive, to ensure they receive devices to help with more strategic plan goals of fifty percent in E L A and fifty percent proficient in M A. And this concludes our presentation. Are there any questions and comments?
Well, needless to say, I was so informed, and I was trying to make notes about what was on which slide. But Ms. Williams said that she would be able to share these presentations with the board because so much good information. So just thank you so much for this work. And and another very uplifting and thoughtful presentation by all of you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is relatively obscure, but as the historian on the board, I would just say that in light of some of the recent state budget proposals from the governor's office, would love to see our history section, the achievements a little bit higher in areas of history that maybe are perhaps more pertinent to our student body in J P S, particularly civil rights movement history, which is by chance my own specialty. And
Always asked, we really do really pretty good in civil rights.
I know, I know it, I know it, and in the context of of current news,
Yes.
would love to to see that. But again, the great presentation, that is just a just a comment and from my own kind of bias and perspective.
We received that. We received that and appreciate that push. You're absolutely right.
And I'm totally with you, Dr. Luckett, because that is one thing that just struck me. I was horrified. I got a little heartache when I saw that. Not our history. That's where all of our students could be. Tell her.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Teddy Roosevelt, important guy, important to know about, but relevance for our students is important.
Yeah, let's, you know, as a reminder, where the story isn't over yet, but but you're absolutely right. We've got a lot of work to do. One, we've got a lot of work to do just to make sure that they're passing that test. And we acknowledge that we've got quite a bit of work to do to build more robust and relevant curriculum and experiences. So both on both fronts, I I receive that wholeheartedly.
And and let me be clear, that's not meant as a critique or a criticism of of the district. It is just just a a point to make him.
Yes. Mister Figures. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Mister Figures, I think you're you're making a comment. You're on you're on mute.
All right, I'm back. Yes, and and another point, Madam Chair Honorable Superintendent, is yesterday I heard, or maybe day before, the governor of the state of Mississippi, Dr. Luckett, say something very discouraging. And that was the fact that state government, his proposal to state government is to do away with the state income tax. The state income tax provides two billion dollars to the state of Mississippi every year. And if that happens, then it's going to affect every area. Education, of course, healthcare, infrastructure, and and a whole lot of other things. And Mississippi is already the poorest state in the country as it pertains to education and most every other determinant. So we must, Dr. Hairston, stay vigilant, Dr. Sevak and and other board members, and use every opportunity to provide the kind of education that our children need in order to make great decisions when they face the voting voting booth. Thank you, and and thank you, Dr. Luckett, for opening that up like that with history.
Agreed. I feel like we should, we need to go back and identify a timeline for when we'll be prepared to come to you, board members, with some really concrete plans and and efforts in this area. Because this is a, this is thankfully an area that several team members and and community members, certainly board members, have named this area for improvement, just building out a more relevant, probably curriculum in general, but specifically around history. And so that's something that I'm excited to to do that work and to to take that on and 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 move it along. So we'll we'll add that to a deliverable list and see if we can't. So, um, we'll, we'll add that to a deliverable list and see if we can't come back to you with some more concrete plans around where we go with that, even in a phased approach. If there are no other questions, um, oh, I'm sorry, go, go. Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, the question from Dr. Sevak was, uh, to speak to a timetable, um, and a plan for getting our participation rates up. I'll point that to either of the presenters, uh, for getting the participation rates up. I, well, I should just open with, uh, as we continue to, um, work and learn virtually, one, having the devices, we're, we're confident that's going to, uh, render a bump, um, in participation. Um, I believe the other piece is just continuing to send the message, and I think after the first term, that message was sent to many families and, and scholars that we're, we're in school. This, this is, you know, the real deal, and so there are consequences and, and there's, um, value to your engagement and the learning process. But anything more that folks want to say about the participation rates?
Oh, just, I would just, go ahead, ma'am.
I was just going to echo what you said, Dr. Green. I think the, um, getting closer to one, uh, one-to-one is going to impact it dramatically. And I can speak for elementary. Um, I do know that the reason that it was up around that ninety percent or so is because a lot of the, um, school leaders, um, made accommodations, uh, for those students to come in and, and use devices that were, um, there in, in labs, um, and, you know, calling and, and just that constant communication with the families of the importance of getting them in there so that we have the data informs us of what we need to do next. It's not just about a test and a grade, but it gives us information that we know how to assist those students. So, um, we're going to just continue, um, with that, but the devices are going to make a big difference as well.
And so also, Dr. Sevak, just to note that for the high schools, um, a large number of our students that are state testing are ninth and tenth graders. Well, that is the number, the large number of students that didn't have devices. Our seniors, many of our seniors had their own devices, you know, and we were also able to give those, um, those students devices. We kind of prioritize, but our students in ninth and tenth grades are our highest need students. So what you notice is since those are students that are testing, those are the students that, you know, were, were paper pencil. Many of them did not return, um, the Scantrons from, from the paper assessments. And we, we didn't have computers in the buildings to even bring them in because we had the old Windows devices and those are obsolete. But I think we have a clear plan now, uh, moving forward, not I think, we have a very clear plan now moving forward. Um, all of our students have devices and, um, there are no excuses. But we also have a participation rate track, and I just wanted to show you what it looks like. For every assessment that we give, our schools will have to daily provide me with a report of how many students they are assessing each day to ensure that this number here, the participation rate is in the nineties. And we're going to have very strong concerted efforts to reach, reach out to parents to ensure that our students are, are taking the assessments, even if we're online.
Yeah, so Dr. Corp, uh, Dr. Sevak was saying we should see a big bump in the, uh, participation for the second, um, or benchmark too, uh, in December. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I, I, I will just underscore what I believe, uh, uh, Ms. Franklin stated, though. The, the school-based teams have, uh, have had to do quite a bit of work to, to help, um, in, ensure that folks are, are responding and, and submitting or completing the assessment. And for, for sure, those who are working paper and pencil to, to get those back. And that was, that was no small feat. So appreciate the work that folks did, but I, I know across the board, they're acknowledging that, um, we've got to get the participation rates up. And to the point again, it's not just to have people take a test. We need that information. You hear all of the planning and analysis that goes into it. It, it only works if we get the actual data, so. Other questions? Yes. What are? What, what are expectations regarding the two-year goals? Um, and I, I appreciate President Johnson for that question. Uh, President Johnson has been, uh, challenging me on that question, um, uh, over the, this period that we've been dealing with the pandemic. Um, I will name publicly that, um, we, we've had multiple actual, actually multiple discussions amongst team members with regard to those goals, um, and we simply are not prepared to, um, let ourselves off the hook. Uh, we know that it's difficult. We know that, um, you know, it's, we're fighting with one hand tied behind our back, um, so to speak. Uh, but frankly, this, these early, uh, benchmark, uh, data points are, are somewhat in encouraging. I don't know, encouraging might be too strong, but at least, um, I see, we see that there's some poss, still some possibility of meeting our benchmark, our, our year two, uh, goals from the strategic plan. Now, there's a lot of work yet to do, but you see where, um, we've, we've been able to sustain or, uh, to even show some increase year over year, uh, by cohort. So, um, you know, the team knows, you know, where we are and, and where we have to go. Again, the other piece, though, thinking back to the, uh, earlier presentation from Ms. Thomas, you know, this drastic decrease of, um, scholars being suspended or, um, in, in school suspension and just the interruptions to instruction, um, I'm confident is going to have a positive impact on, uh, scholar learning. Now, we, we've, we're clear that there are plenty of young people who are struggling, uh, in this virtual setting. Um, however, there are also and always young people who struggle in person. And some of that presents itself through off-task behaviors and negative behaviors. The fact that we don't have that number of off-task behavior and, and disruptive behavior, uh, we see at least as, as a sign that there's a window of opportunity that we, we need to seize. Um, and, and some trade-offs for sure, uh, given the situation, but opportunities still to, to, uh, achieve the goals that we set. I say that with great anxiety, but, but, um, you know, we, we just, as, as educators, as folks who claim to believe and, and to, um, believe in the core values that we've set, uh, believe in the strategies that we've implemented and continue to implement, believe in the team, believe in the scholars. Um, we can't say that we truly believe that this is possible and this can be done and then lower the bar. So we've got to keep jumping high and, and preparing ourselves and training for, you know, the bar such as it is. I still believe, board members, that we're going to beat this, uh, the goals in our strategic plan. I still believe that, not promising that for this year, but I still believe that we're going to beat those goals in our strategic plan by, by year five. Absolutely. And, and that's not based on Eric Green, that's based on this team and the folks who commit to these scholars getting where they need to go. Any other questions with regard to that? I know there was a lot of information. We'll get those presentations out to you. Any other quick questions that folks might have? Okay, I know we've got, given you lots, um, but I'm going to conclude with this. Board members, my team and I have continued our planning efforts around COVID, um, and engagement with representative groups from across the district. Um, uh, through our observations of instruction and, and we have done, our, our team is doing incredible work, observing, teaching and learning. Um, yeah, I could go on and on about that, but through our observations of instruction, a review of the data as you've seen, and that's academic data, enrollment, attendance, behavior, anecdotal, um, data that we're, we're collecting. And again, engagement with all of our stakeholder groups, groups. We're preparing, um, for the, uh, spring twenty eight, twenty one, uh, semester. Um, so we're, we're preparing our plan and, and, um, just about ready to talk about that plan. We're calling it a smart restart. Uh, we'll begin discussing this plan later this week, this week before we go out on, on Thanksgiving break. And then we'll bring it to the board officially and formally for action on December first. That's the first board meeting. Actually, that's the week that we get back from, um, Thanksgiving break. So, um, the team has done considerable work. We've heard from representative groups across the, the, the city. Um, many folks continue to be very, very concerned and, and, and appropriately so concerned about the data and the uptick in data of, uh, COVID cases and what we're seeing all across the nation. Want to remind folks that we're talking about two months from now, right? Two months from now, when, um, when, um, you know, the, the, uh, the plan would go into place. But we won't, we'll talk some more about, uh, some of the specifics there and, as I said, bring it to you officially on December one, um, for, uh, further discussion and for board action.
So, Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard something that sounded like a decision had been made and my brain's a little fuzzy now.
We, 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 the team has done the work that, uh, we believe, uh, we need to do and, and have listened and looked at data and that. And so what we'll do this week is to present, um, uh, start talking to members of the community. More members of the team, of, of the broader JPS team, um, and share publicly with, uh, with the community. But then we'll come back on December one, um, uh, and see if there's additional conversation and then, uh, ask the board to, uh, take action on our proposal. Officially, the board will, will make the, the decision, but we'll bring that to you, uh, officially.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So yes, just to be absolutely clear, we, sure, we, we've done quite a bit of work and, and we believe we've got a pathway that makes sense, but we'll bring it to the board for action. Yes, sir.
Will the plan have, first of all, let me say thank you to the whole team. I have been a part of some of you, the level of, um, commitment, the work, the intentionality has been, I just want to communicate that first.
Yeah, just, well, just to make it easy.
And I am obviously not, uh, pining for the job of superintendent. Um, I'm just using this as a communication vehicle. I wanted to start by, um, just to, I have had an opportunity to be a part of the, um, uh, conversation with the broader team around, um, our smart restart program and just wanted to thank all of the team members for the incredible amount of work, commitment, um, to that, that effort, um, both at the level of our scholars, but also teachers and also our parents. Um, so I wanted to start with that. I do have several questions. I'll, I'll probably turn the computer back to you. Um, first, uh, does, will the plan have data that will share what some of the hurdles will be? It will inform going into buildings, coming out of buildings, and that's one. Um, number two, uh, will we have, um, a, uh, a communications plan wrapped around? Like how we will update on a regular interval, daily, weekly, the information related to COVID. Um, three, uh, uh, if we, I'm, I know, I'm sorry. Um, just, uh, if you could speak to, I know we have been accumulating PPE, um, and that, that we're storing it in, uh, and we're storing it in, in anticipation of going back, if you could, will the plan speak to that? Um, and a communication PPE. And just the last one is just, um, maybe speak to the efforts in particularly, uh, that the district has taken to gather feedback from teachers in particular, who are going to, who effectively will become frontline workers once the students return to the schools. Um, those are questions I've just heard in the community over the last week or so and just wanted to, um, share them tonight.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Sevak. Um, you're, you're asking the questions that we, uh, have, have anticipated and that we receive. Um, uh, without, without getting into all the details of the, the plan as we're, um, as we're proposing, um, we, we have contemplated what I call thresholds, um, or incidents or, um, or what have you that would, would signal, um, um, if we were to, if we were to come back into the building, that would si, signal, um, a classroom quarantining or school closure or perhaps even a, a district closure. So we've definitely, um, contemplated that. Um, we, we will indicate, um, uh, for whatever direction we take, we will indicate communications um, with regard to, um, COVID cases and, um, and more just around, um, that, that experience. Uh, and, and some of those things, we've, we've, uh, seen some great models and strategies from colleagues in, in other districts. Um, in, in one district in particular that we visited, um, a neighboring district, um, just to learn of their communications, uh, strategies and some of the things that have helped families to, uh, understand what is and, and, um, kind of what's happening. With regard to PPE, uh, yes, the team has been stocking up really since the summer, um, on various, um, uh, items, PPE items. So we have, we've developed a PPE, both a PPE and a sanitation, sanitizing, sanitization, if that's the word, uh, list. So we, we have, uh, two lists that, um, we're prepared to share, um, as well as the processes for, um, getting materials to, um, to school, uh, going forward. And I should, just to clarify for, for everyone, um, while some of our staff members are out, um, on accommodations and, and, uh, working from home for various reasons, we have several staff members who are teaching, although virtually, teaching from the, the schoolhouse. And so again, wherever we go next, um, these issues around supplies and PPE are, are real and relevant even today. Um, and the last question with regard to teacher feedback, we have, uh, I've shared this previously with the board, but just as a reminder to, to, to all, we have a, um, scholar advisory, uh, committee that I meet with monthly, a, um, an administrator or a school leader advisory committee, uh, a teacher advisory committee and a, and now a parent advisory committee. And as well, we engaged a, the, um, what we call the school reopening advisory committee that we launched over the summer. We engaged them, uh, again, as we're thinking through and considering where we go next. Um, so that is, um, that is the way, this advisory committee is the way in which, um, I have engaged with representative groups, um, uh, from all of those stakeholders. Um, but as well, um, I'm hearing from, uh, members of the team who are working with teachers, right? I get, I actually get emails and, well, not texts, but emails directly from teachers with some of their experiences and concerns or questions or what have you. But as well, we're hearing directly from, um, many of our principals who are working daily with, with teachers who, uh, and I should say teachers and other staff members, um, building staff members, uh, uh, based on their experiences and some of the challenges and just, you know, all, all sorts of things, concerns or things that they need more of or what have you. Um, but we, we will, um, we'll make sure that, um, we kind of highlight those, those things here in the, um, as they are already in the plan, just to make sure that we've, uh, where we've thought through and where we have some, uh, clear, um, uh, direction that, that we share that and, and clarify that as, as much as possible to, um, eliminate any continued question. Are there other questions or? Or sure, yeah, absolutely. Okay, hearing no other, we're seeing no other questions or, um, remarks from board members. Again, I appreciate your indulgence. I know we gave you a lot of information. Um, very excited to share that with you today and, um, hopefully you too feel that, um, you know, and see the light uh, at the end of the tunnel, uh, at least in some pieces of this work. Before I turn the meeting back over to you, um, Madam President, um, with your indulgence, I do want to say a special happy birthday to Dr. I do want to say a special happy birthday to Dr. Smith and Dr. Murray, who both celebrate birthdays today, November the 17th. So happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And of course, thank you as always to the team for those excellent reports. Board members, now we are at the public participation or public comment portion of the agenda, and we do have someone to speak. We have Ms. Newell.
Hi, yes, that's me. Thank you so much for having me tonight, President Johnson. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, great. Thank you so much. Yes, I'm coming to you tonight as a parent of two JPS students and also an educator in JPS. And some of the comments, and I'm very glad to be at this meeting and to get to hear all this information. That's great. But I'll go ahead and share my prepared comments, which I've already shared with President Johnson. If you would like access to them or you can contact me. So JPS made a difficult and wise decision to conduct the first semester of classes entirely virtual. I, as both a parent and an educator, greatly appreciate JPS prioritizing safety and science over a dangerous rush to a normal that does not exist. Now, in the second term of this virtual semester, I am asking for clarity and communication regarding how JPS is making decisions about how and when students will return to in-person classes. All families and workers need easy access to clear information about what data, feedback and factors are being considered as JPS continues to assess the safety and feasibility of returning to school. This information should be publicly updated monthly, in my opinion, preferably via the district website. And also, in my opinion, until there are no new cases of COVID-19. So families and workers are informed and have confidence in the board's decision-making. I have included specific questions and concerns that I would like to see addressed, and I'm confident hundreds, if not thousands, of other JPS workers and families have the same questions and concerns. Some questions. Number one, has a date been set to make a determination, not an announcement, about next semester's continuation or not of virtual learning? What data? Number two, what data regarding the pandemic and feedback from concerned parties, employees, students and families are being considered to make this decision? Number three, will the decision be contingent upon building improvements, PPE supplies and hiring of substitute teachers? Number four, will there be another survey similar to the one offered before the 2020 school year began? And my last question, is there an online location that already exists possibly that has up-to-date information regarding decisions about returning to in-person school? And the last minute or so I have to speak, I just wanted to share some of the concerns I've heard and noticed within my own school. So potential workforce issues, there are teachers considering quitting or retiring if in-person next semester, a concern for sanitation needs, so PPE supplies, custodial staff, and then concern about having an inability to teach both in-person and virtually simultaneously. There's educational integrity issues, student learning disruptions from changing learning formats due to small and large outbreaks, and having non-educator substitutes leading classes for weeks at a time. And then teachers, teachers struggling to prepare adequately for substitutes. And some building issues that we've seen is mold growth, poor ventilation, small hallways, which are not great for class change. And further community issues that just within the past week, just seeing the shortage of ICU beds. So those are my comments. I see in, in the chat that somebody's asked me to send them. I can definitely do that. But I really appreciate you letting me bring these comments and concerns to your attention. And I appreciate the work you're doing. And I feel like being present in this meeting has helped me to some extent understand what processes are happening, which is great. But I am looking for clear communication outside of board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newell. All right, board members, we are now at board member reports. Are there any board member reports tonight? Just for, but just for the record, we don't generally respond, we don't ever really respond to public comments. We generally listen and then administration will take whatever actions necessary in terms of response if they see it necessary. So thank you. If there are no board members reports, then we can move on to information action items. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, President Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you item A for information action. It's approval of the memorandum of termination between JPS and BH DJ3 LLC. Board members, back in 2016, the board at that time canceled the lease for BH DJ3 LLC for non-payment and subsequently leased the, the same parcel out to Zeno Holders in 2019. Apparently, there has been some misplacing of paperwork at the Heinz County Clerk's Office. And so in order to make sure that the tax rolls are correct, that the correct LSE is billed for the taxes, they have asked that the board approve this memorandum of termination for this company that I believe is no longer even in business. But we are asking for approval of this memorandum of termination to be, to be filed with Heinz County so that the tax situation can be straightened out with the proper listing.
I'm thinking, Ms. Miller. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve information action item A?
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor? Are there any names? There being none, the motion is approved. Ms. Miller?
The next item, thank you, Ms. Johnson. The next item is the approval of the monthly financial report for the month ended October 31st, 2020. Board members, this report, as you know, contains your fund balance report, your budget report for the month ended October 31st, report of cash flow, and also the bank reconciliation reports. Of note, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention of the district maintenance budget. We are about 25.6% expended compared to about 27% expended last year at the same time. This is actually really good because we, we want to be at 25% at the end of every quarter. And for us to be at the end of a quarter plus a month at 25%, we're still expending at the rate that we are anticipating with our budget. Also, as far as our cash flow is concerned, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves as we were last year. The cash flow at the end of October was $2.3 million. And this year, the cash flow at the end of October is about 2.5. So we're also seeing our average expenses for district maintenance and accounts payable and payroll trend a little downward as well, which is good, which is again in line with 25% expended at a quarter plus a month. Last year, our average expenses for payroll and accounts payable was $11.2 million. And this year, we're at $11.088. So I'm presenting this for your approval. Also, as a matter of update, wanted to update the board that today we did close on the tax anticipation note of $20 million. And we also closed on the GO bond, the bond refinancing today as well. As a part of the bond refinancing activities, we did go through a rating review with Standard and Poor's. And I liked, I'm very excited to announce that the district maintained its A-plus stable bond rating for this rating period for Standard and Poor's. So we're very excited about that. That speaks to the action of this board and the support that this board has given to this administration for its fiscal practices. So I present to you the monthly financial report for October 31st, 2020.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, you're muted.
Goodness, I don't know how that happened. Let's see, Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any name? There being none, the motion is approved. Ms. Miller?
Yes, ma'am. Item C is the approval of the Equity in Distance Learning Act. We call it ETLA funds, and also the Mississippi Pandemic Response Broadband Availability Act. It's a mouthful, awards to the district. These are two of the funding sources that all districts received as a result of the CARES COVID Act funds that were coming from, directly from the Mississippi Department of Education. So the legislature allocated about $200 million for Mississippi Connects Program through two, two sources, ETLA, which is Equity in Distance Learning, and the Mississippi Pandemic Response Broadband Availability Act. And so these funds will allow school districts to utilize these dollars to purchase items to support distance learning, virtual learning, to make sure that all, all of our students are receiving a quality education. Both funds cover up to 80% of the cost for the school district, and the school districts have to match up to 20% of those funds. For ETLA, the Equity in Distance Learning Act, our award was $6,192,649. And we use those funds to purchase teacher and student laptop devices as well as software to support the instructional programs. The Mississippi Pandemic Response Fund, the district was awarded $1,408,028.31. And we are utilizing those funds to engage in a wireless networking infrastructure project. And that will include some dollars to make towers in the city, have them a more, a more robust internet access to our students in certain areas. So those, both of these grants have been awarded to the district. And the good thing about it is we got a lot of money. The, the, the challenging part of this is all these funds have to be expanded no later than December 15th. So we are bringing these two items for your approval tonight.
So this is, I'm sorry, was this item?
Ms. Miller, y'all have plans in place? You know what you're going to spend. We won't have any trouble spending the money, will we? Well, we've already spent the majority of it. Very good. These are reimbursement grants. The computers that came in, all of the student computers, the teacher computers, we actually went ahead and, and spent them actually before they actually got finally afforded to us. So we were very optimistic, but they.
Wonderful. I think I remember you or Dr. Green mentioning that, but excellent. I move that we approve this item C.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. And Ms. Miller for the, for item D.
Item D is the approval to award RFP 2020 for the wireless network project, just the materials to Geoverse. This is part of our HB 1788, our pandemic response broadband funds that we would like to award to a company called Geoverse. They will be providing the equipment for the wireless project, to make those towers work. We're also asking that the board reject all responders for the construction portion of this RFP. There were some issues with the, the bid itself, and the board, the administration is recommending that at this point, we reject all responses for construction, and we are pursuing other avenues to make sure that that installation occurs at a later date.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Dr. Seback?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Couple of questions. So I was wondering if someone on the team could share a bit of the vision for this project? This is an incredibly exciting project in terms of extending services, not just to our scholars, but to the broader Jackson community. And then also speak to the number of students that will be served by this once up and going as well. Thanks.
Yes.
So President Johnson, Dr. Seback and board members and Dr. Green, this is Joe Albright. I've been working with our partners from the operational perspective. As I'm sure you all know, there are significant gaps in the broadband coverage in the city of Jackson. And so this particular project was designed to fill those gaps with wireless connectivity, which initially will service somewhere between 500 and 700 households for our scholars, expanding up to what we think will be as many as, well, a minimum of 3,500 scholars' households. So significant undertaking from the standpoint of the initial part. It will be three towers that cover some of the largest gaps in broadband in the, the central west and southern part of Jackson. And so this particular equipment will, will service those three towers. But at the same time, all of this is expandable to the original vision, which was 12 towers within the city of Jackson. These are, these are actually City of Jackson towers, and they've agreed to allow us to install the equipment on them and generate signal from them. And then, once we have that complete, then City of Jackson will continue with its broadband installation. And eventually, this will move to, to cover additional scholars, businesses, other subscribers, which will help to pay for what we have as a goal of either minimal cost to our scholar subscribers in the range of $10 to $15 a month or no cost, which is what we're really hoping for. So that's in a nutshell, kind of where the project is at this point.
Albright, what's the timetable when we hope it'll be all up and running?
So our original goal was, as you saw, to have construction up and going along with the award of the materials purchased. And that would have been completed by no later than the 15th of December. Now we're looking for other funding sources, and we still have an opportunity to complete within the first couple of months, the three towers, excuse me, within the first couple of months of that spring term. So December, January at this particular point.
Great, thank you.
So just to, just to add to Mr. Albright's response, and I, I thank you, Mr. Albright, and to Aaron Mason, and also to Cheryl and Miller, who's, and I'm sorry, and to Dr. Merritt, William Merritt, who've been working so, so hard to help us understand all of the peculiarities and limitations and restrictions around the funding sources. This particular funding source, we appreciate and agree that.
This particular funding source, we appreciate and agree that this is, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to think much more long-term than the hotspots. You've heard over the last several months, lots of conversation, and we even mentioned earlier, lots of conversation about hotspots and providing those to scholars and families to get them immediately connected. And while that's a quick and efficient way to get folks connected, thinking long-term, that's just, it's not tenable. At some point, you know, when these dollars run out, someone's going to have to re-up with the hotspot connectivity. And so what we're trying to do is to create a longer-term solution for what we see as a part of our new normal, having our scholars able to work and learn remotely and over the internet for years to come. And so, you know, the challenges of having all of these dollars, as Ms. Miller stated, having all these dollars awarded to us, but needing to expend them by the, by the middle of next month, geez, in about a month. That just doesn't allow for some of the more robust problem-solving that that we were seeking to to use it for. And so, in our case, we're looking to or seeking to blend these funds with some private funds, donor funds, to to continue to build out on this, this, this solution that we have. And so, you know, again, we have a number of hotspots, and we'll be able to get folks connected immediately. And as we think much longer term about how to continue this, this work in a virtual space, we'll have this broader, longer-term solution in place as well.
And I'll add to that, to some of the funds that we are-
You're on mute, Ms. Miller.
Oh. Um, I'm okay now. And I will add that some of the, part of the funds that we will also be using, not only to support the towers, is that we're buying additional access points to provide on the outsides of our buildings and within our buildings so that if people need to, if our scholars, our parents, our families, our teachers need to come, you know, to the parking lot even, they will be able to access the district's website through those. So we're, we're being very creative with the dollars, and I appreciate the fact that we are being pushed to think outside the box, to provide a long-term solution for our students to virtually learn.
Board members, are there any other comments or questions?
I move that we accept item D in information action items.
Thank you, Dr. Luckett. Is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Next, board members, we have the consent agenda items finance. All of these items have been presented to us. We've had an opportunity to review. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
Will you go on, Ms. Hilliard, and I'll second you.
Madam President, I move that we will approve the consent agenda items.
I second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, and Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All of these items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
I move.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions. Are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
Did you skip something?
I move.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. We did get everything, didn't we? That was everything?
Yeah.
Is there consideration to hold executive session? And there is a consideration to hold executive session. So is there a motion to close the meeting so that we can consider going into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
I second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved, and now the meeting is closed.
Y'all are making me jealous. I want to be in the boardroom with you guys.
I'll turn it back on, sorry.
Y'all are keeping secrets from us.
No, 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 no. We're just talking about how great those reports were.
They were great.
Dr. Luckett has, oh, goodness gracious.
I thought we were closed.
Oh, we closed the session. We haven't adjourned the meeting. Dr. Luckett has moved that we adjourn, and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
But there, there being none?
None.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Yep, y'all have a good week.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, all. Stay strong.